Good evening, it's 6:30. Let's get started by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, there are some items that were on the agenda that have been taken off. So, 7470 Golf View, item 1P, has been postponed. Item 3, 3200 Devonbrook, has been removed from the agenda. And item 9, 2688 Indian Mound, item 9 will not be heard tonight. So if you're here for any of those items, we will not be taking them up. Let's take attendance.
So noted.
Okay, then I'll need a motion to approve or amend the minutes of November 11th.
So who?
Support.
I have motion and support. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. As a brief introduction, the Zoning Board of Appeals is a seven-member quasi-judicial body appointed by the Bloomfield Township Board of Trustees for the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act. Matters pending before the Zoning Board of Appeals are decided on a case-by-case basis. Any appeal of a decision made by the Zoning Board of Appeals is subject to Circuit Court review. Each case will be called separately in the order shown on tonight's agenda. There will be an opportunity for public comment at one point during each case. All persons wishing to comment will be asked to provide their name and address at the podium, address your comments to the board, and not the applicant or other members of the public. Given the number of appeals tonight, please make your comments brief. Comments by the neighborhood association will be considered as part of the factual information presented to the board, but those comments are not the determining factor for approval or denial. Please confine comments to the specific request before the board. For a request to be successful tonight, an affirmative vote of at least four members present is required. We hope this provides a better understanding of what you can expect at tonight's meeting. And so with that, we'll call the first item, which is 2P, 1779 Heron Ridge. Is the applicant ready?
Good evening. Mr. Lucia is not able to make his out of town today, so you're, I'm the stunt double, if you will.
So what is your name, stunt double?
My name's Joe Wilson with Wilson Design Associates. And we're here on behalf of, again, the Lucia family for 1779 Heron Ridge Drive. Our proposal for you tonight is a sport court that measures 25 by 45, and then several retaining walls around the property that vary in height. The property itself has about 23 to 25 feet of grade change from one property line to the next, or to the opposite property line. So it stands to reason that these, there will need to be some walls to install these flat-ish surfaces with the, and then of course landscaping is, they've got some big trees planned to go in around that sport court. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions, comments concerning.
Do we have any questions from the board this time? I'll open this to the public. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for further questions, the applicant discussion, or a motion.
Are the retaining walls for the sports court, or is it for something else?
I'm sorry?
The retaining walls.
Well, so in the plan, okay, so from property line to property line, is about 25, 23, let's call it 23 feet of grade change. Putting green, pool, sport court. So those things will be stepped down in a terrace fashion, so yeah, there'll be the need for walls. Now, where we can grade things out, we'll grade things out as long as that's permissible, but without getting too steep on things. But yeah, the walls will be throughout the backyard holding up these elements, so.
It's because you said there's a change in the grade.
Yeah, it's significant, yeah. It was about 20, 23 feet of grade change from one side to the other, so.
All right, well, I'll make a motion if no one has any questions. I'll start with the permission request first, and then go into the dimensional variance. In regards to the appeal at 1779 Heron Ridge Drive for the accessory structure of a sports court, I move that the request be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of the accessory structure is appropriate for the neighborhood. Accessory structures of sport courts are very common. As far as the dimensional variance at the same location, I also move that that variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty for the retaining walls to exceed four feet in height because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because without the height of these retaining walls, it would prevent reasonable use of the property. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors as, because of the home and because of the orientation of the home and the slope and topography that these types of retaining walls would be necessary. Unique circumstances of the property also has to do with the slope and topography, and because of that, it is not self-created. With that said, if approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen plantings may be required to screen the sports court and retaining walls, and plantings must meet or exceed the height of the retaining walls at the time of installation. There is no illumination permitted on the sports court, and the use of the sport court is limited to daytime hours.
Support.
All right, so I have motion and support discussion. So, just so the applicants clear, what are we saying about screening in the motion? So, this is the, this is the plan, screening?
Yeah.
So we've got it on one side there.
Right.
There's a pretty big, so the way that site sits, it's, the sport court's kind of on the northwest corner of the site. If you go to the north directly above the pool, there's some pretty, it's pretty well forested at the moment. But if additional evergreens were required, I don't think that's going to be an issue either, so.
And that's just to screen it, if necessary.
Yeah, and so these pictures are taken in the summer. I don't think all of those are evergreen, so the requirement would be that the screening has to screen the court and the walls 12 months of the year to the height, so.
That's not an issue.
All right, so maybe, is that the intent of the motion? Is that, so clarify.
Is that the intent of the motion?
Is that, is that clear enough for enforcement? Okay. All right, so we've had a motion and support, and that was discussion. So with that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
So calling the next item, item 3P, 4710 Avondale, or Evan, yeah, Avondale Letter.
Good evening. I'm Sean Gardola with STGA of 4248 Delamere Court, representing my client Joshua and Lindsay Runner for 4710 Avondale Terrace. My client Joshua Runner is joining me this evening. We are here to seek three variances. The first is a variance for a house in a deck corner on the south side of the building, five feet into the natural feature setback. The second is a retaining wall on the north side of the structure that would encroach 10 feet into the natural feature setback to support the driveway. This also includes a retaining wall that is a maximum height of six feet, and it varies from zero to six, back down to zero, it follows a grade. And lastly, encroachment into the natural feature setback at the rear of the residence to create a small lawn for the family. I will address each item and explain the unique circumstances of the property and the difficulties in conforming with the ordinances. First, this property is one of the most unique that I've worked on in decades due to the vast size of the wetlands and the buildable area in the rear and side yards significantly reduced, and furthermore, by the natural feature setback. Please note that we are not suggesting that we are encroaching into the wetlands. In response to the concerns of flooding by neighbors and the HOA that we've listened to since 2022 and tried to address any of those concerns in this neighborhood, this plan includes a significant retention pond in the front of the property adjacent to Avondale Terrace to capture all of the water runoff from the roof and the property. The capacity of this retention is greater than what can be generated by the property and the home. And due to this front yard feature and the surrounding wetland at the rear and side yards of the building, that is why we are encroaching into the natural feature setback. The encroachment elements are the corner of the building to the south, as I said, and the retaining wall to the north that is in the site plan. And lastly, we're seeking the small lawn on the rear of the property. But you should note that the 454 feet of encroachment into the natural feature setback is being mitigated on other areas of the property with natural plantings to restore natural feature setback on the property. This has been going on for five years, just so you understand, this is a long progression. I've actually been in front of you before for the same property. That was a couple, three years ago. At that time, we were seeking a temporary encroachment into the natural feature setback for this, bringing the public sewer up the road. After realizing that that could be a major disturbance to the neighborhood, and quite frankly, financially unfeasible for a single taxpayer to have to bear at the cost of $650,000, we approached the ESD and the Building Department, and we worked together with HRC and all of the consultants to develop a plan whereby we will be able to do a pressure sewer and tap into the city of Bloomfield Hills' public sewer and thereby not disturb anybody, quite frankly. Because bringing the public sewer up the road was determined to have to be an open cut, not a directional bore, which is anybody who has experience with that and knowing where the wetlands are on and where they are on this street would be, quite frankly, a disaster. And so, we were able to obtain an easement into the property to the north. All of this is on private property, so we're not disturbing any neighbors. We have the support of the neighbor to the north, as well as the easement from them to be able to accomplish this. I will tell you that this plan has been worked on by the best engineers, wetlands consultants, and attorneys that I know. We have worked literally every week for five years with the Departments of Bloomfield Township, and we feel like this is a very solid plan. I can also tell you that we have given our plan to the HOA. We're not in complete agreement with them with regard to the front yard setback. We have also been told by them back in '22 and recently that they are concerned about our impact to the wetlands. So that's why I stress, we are not suggesting that we are building or encroaching into the wetlands. We are simply trying to encroach into the natural feature setback by five feet on the south of the property and 10 feet in the north of the property. And then of course, we are very limited because of the detention basin that can only be in the front of this property, in front of the home, and between the home and the street. And so I have no more room. The last thing I'll say is, this home is about 5,400 square feet, which most of you probably already know, this neighborhood, that's being underbuilt. So we're not suggesting building a monster or anything of that nature. It's a very reasonable-sized home for anywhere in Bloomfield Township, quite frankly. I personally have built six houses in this vicinity that are way in excess of 5,000 square feet. That's what I have for you at this time. I don't know if you want to add anything?
I just want to thank the board for hearing our request tonight and look forward to hopefully building a home for our family. That has been quite a long journey, as Sean pointed out, so thank you. One thing I'll also add is, my wife and I directed, Sean, knowing the wetlands and the challenges with this property and the entire team to make sure that we don't negatively impact the area, and if at all possible, to improve the area, given the history of flooding that it's had. So that's why the retention basin is allowed to take on more water than anything that we could produce essentially. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from the board?
I have a question. When you say you don't have complete approval from the association on your front setback, could that change?
We would hope so. We've shared with them a approval from the HOA for the previous owner where they allowed for a 50-foot setback in the front yard as opposed to the 100-foot setbacks that's in their deed restrictions. So, I will, it's been five years, so there's a lot to it. The deed restrictions were developed in 1915. Avondale Terrace at that time went north off of Charing Cross and then went to the east over to Kensington. So any of you know that area, right? It went up and it went to the east. Railroad came through in 1932. In 1932, City of Bloomfield Hills and Bloomfield Township found out that the Trail Bridge subdivision, which is to the north of our property, needed a secondary exit or entrance for first responders. So that's how the Canterbury Connector came about. The Canterbury Connector is, to this day, not a platted road. Okay, so Canterbury Road and Avondale Terrace, two separate roads in 1915, all the way to 1932, Canterbury Connector comes through. Canterbury Connector, believe it or not, is one-third of Lot 99, his lot. So there's never been any rectification of the setback in the deed restriction or, quite frankly, compensation, if you will, for taking a third of the lot. And, you know, for example, Oakland County Road Commission does not show this as a road. It actually shows it as a common-use pathway. So, you know, there's, that's the circumstances behind all of that. I don't want to bore you anymore, but if you have more questions, I'm happy to answer.
Why does it make sure where your final front is, you're not going to project any more than the five feet and 10 feet that you mentioned?
No, we're not. No, we just have the retaining wall that holds up the partial portion of the driveway. Quite frankly, the other, the second part about the retaining wall being six feet, I know Bloomfield Township very well. I could terrace that wall and not have to ask for, you know, a dimensional variance with height. But if I were to terrace it, then I got to go further into the natural feature setback.
Any other questions from the board? So is the wetland regulated by Eagle?
The wetland is regulated by Eagle. We've been doing work with them all the way through. The departments all have that information. Brooks Williamson did all of our due diligence. Nice Minder, which is your consulting, wetlands consultants, already verified everything. So on the department levels, this is ready to go.
Any other questions from the board?
I do. When you're talking about the groundwork, the sod work, the lawn work and all of that, can you describe what you mean by that, by encroaching into the 25-feet natural features?
Yeah, so in the rear of the property, I mean, we're literally talking about out the back door of this walkout basement. We, quite frankly, rather than just having natural Michigan plant species, the owners desired to have a lawn. It's a very small area, basically the size of the deck, and then beyond that, that would be in the natural feature setback area. Not in the wetland, but in the natural feature setback area, which we all know are 25 feet. So fairly small. And offsetting that, there's a significant portion to the north of the retaining wall that is natural feature setback as well, in addition to that buildable space. But we are, in mitigation, going to essentially add back 1,500 square feet of natural plantings that would be under the jurisdiction of the ESD to verify our species and all that. And that has to go on for a period of a year in terms of verification.
Any other questions? All right, I'd like to open the public hearing. Does anyone here like to speak on this item?
Good evening. My name's Dave Turner. I live at 4730 Avondale Terrace, just south of this property or downstream from it. I did send in an email detailing my opposition to this, to these variances. The HOA setbacks is a concern, and that's, I realize that's separate, but that is a concern. You know, the two natural feature setbacks, I don't want to, you know, this is, there's extensive grading shown going right to the edge of the wetlands here. It's not just a little yard in the back, it's extensive grading, excavation fill. I'm sure there's some clearing to the limits of what they're talking about going right to the edge of the wetlands, all to reshape this property and alter the floodplain. So I strongly oppose all of that work, including the permanent work that's within those setbacks. The house and the retaining wall, the driveway, the fill, the retaining wall height, over six feet. You know, I want to put this in perspective. The retaining wall, it essentially creates a man-made island. And if you're sitting at the road, this is a very flat property. If you're sitting at the road, the first floor level of this property, of this house, proposed house is 13 feet above the existing roadway. So, and then it's a two-and-a-half-story house above that. You're 40 feet from the road as they've laid this thing out. You know, the retaining wall height does play a factor into this. You're creating a man-made island right there. It's, I invested in this neighborhood for the natural features and the setbacks. I didn't invest it for man-made islands with houses towering over the roads or overheight retaining walls, extensive disturbances to the wetlands, or work within the wetland setback. All these variances play negatively under the impact, and they negatively impact the character and spirit of this neighborhood. If anybody's been through here, this is not consistent with what we got going on. ZBA application is very clear that it needs to demonstrate a need. There's no surprises on this property. We've been, we've lived there for 14 years. We've never experienced any additional wetland, noticeable increase in the wetland area. You can go online and look at the Michigan Wetland map, and in two seconds, you know that there's, this entire property is colored as a wetland. You know, the wetland setback, yeah, that's there to protect the wetlands. You know, the detention basin, which, you know, is presented as a, as a respect to the neighbors or benefit to the neighbors, well, I don't know that a detention basin in the front yard along the road is a respect to the neighbor. And I'm still concerned about the alteration of the floodplain and pushing water around this house. And I think the variance request is self-created based on the size, the scale of the home, the driveway, the retaining wall, and the combination with the disregard for the setbacks. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Yes, good evening. My name is Estridge Keaper. I live at 4774 Avondale Terrace. I am Engineer Turner's neighbor, so while he's directly adjacent to that property, I'm one property away. And in front of both our properties, there's sort of small ponds. And I too moved into the area for the reasons that Mr. Turner mentioned. I can provide some perspective, and I do agree with you guys, this is a unique property. And I can give you some historical perspective on that. I've been in this house for over 30 years, and in the '90s, I was on the BEIA board. And at that time, we had several interactions with this property. What I recall is, one of the sellers, one of the original owners, I guess, was given this property. He was a dentist. He was given this property for payment of dental bills. And he was trying to sell it at that time in the '90s for $30,000. And a number of buyers could come forth to us, and each time they would be told, "This is wetlands. It's not a buildable property." You could see by the price, the properties around you are selling it more than 10 times that amount. You got to understand that this is wetland, so I don't know what you could do with a wetland, but you can't build a house. So that was the standard when Errol Townsend was chairman of the BIA Association, when Marcia Robowitzky was chairperson of that, you know, it was, it was made plain. Anyone who took the time to do their research and ask understood that this property was wetlands, and it was not, not buildable. I went off the board in the 2000s, in mid-2000s or so. And then you mentioned the word "unique" again. Something unique happened. Under cover of darkness, a bunch of trucks moved into this property and dumped a bunch of earth. And so I used to take walks along there, and there used to be water right by the road. The wetland actually came right up to the road. Those trucks filled in that wetland. And I was not aware of any notices that any requests were made for variances or anything like that. But nonetheless, that property was filled in like that. And, you know, then subsequently, I was hearing rumors about, you know, someone's trying to build on that. Now, after, within a few years of these, of this fill-in, you talk about flooding. I do want to show you, you have a way of projecting picture?
Yeah.
In front of Engineer Turner's and my property, that, basically you could see the road's a river. So flooding occurs a lot. The area looked right in front of you. Very often, it floods even today. Now, obviously, there are many, many factors in the ability of the road to flood. But I can tell you that after this dirt was dumped there, I've been locked in my property. There was a foot of water. I couldn't drive my car through it. The water was above the door of the car. And this is actually, I'm on the hill, Engineer Turner lives pretty close down to the water, so there's another major flooding event. I think his property is a lot more potential hazard than mine. This is the road that I'm living, I'm on the hill, and Engineer Turner's house is on the left here. If you go straight through there, you cross the two ponds. There's a pond on the left, pond on the right. And the previous view I showed you is the flooding. So I can tell you that flooding significantly impacts the neighborhood and the neighbors.
So you just need to address your comments to us. You're turning around, just talk.
Oh, sure. Okay, well, I thought this was a public meeting.
It is, but you address your comments to us.
Okay, I will certainly abide by that.
Thank you.
Now, another thing, when I moved into this property, we had fish in these ponds. We had perch, we had sunfish. After these events occurred, the fish all died. There were dead fish all over. But now, was that related? I don't know. But nonetheless, we don't have any fish anymore. So my kids are grown up now, so I guess it's not that big a deal there. But bottom line is, my wife and I both oppose the variances that are being requested, and I agree 100% with the expertise of my neighbor Engineer Turner. Thank you.
Thank you for that background information. So anyone else would like to speak on this item?
You're bringing that up again across from this site, the map that you had up. 676 up there, my setbacks are further back. And I've lived there for about five years, and one of the things, I understand they want to build a home, but the biggest thing is, encroaching on the wetlands is an issue. To me, the major concern is increasing runoff onto the road from the property. I have been trapped in my home numerous times from the flooding that has occurred across from Dave Turner's property. There is a large pond there, as well as where it becomes Canterbury Road above that area. The road is impassable on both sides, just as that image showed you. That is true. I've lived through that. We have not been able to exit our home safely. Emergency services couldn't come in if we needed them, which we haven't, thank goodness. But the other thing is, there's been cars that have been stuck in those, in that flooding zones and stalled. People were in their cars. So I've seen that. So it's something that not everybody sees because I live there every day. So I understand they have a complex issue here to try to fix, to build a home, but I don't know if that's going to work. And I don't want to take that risk, my family and the other neighbors, to have runoff from a home set that high that is going to have that much runoff of water into the road and cause increased flooding, that is an unknown. So I do oppose this. I do agree with Dave, and that's where I stand on this.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Supervisor McReedy, Ms. Beebe, and the rest of the board members. My name's Renee Butler. I live at 4910. I live at 4910 Dryden Lane. And I'm here this evening as an interested 24-year homeowner in the neighborhood, and also as a member of the Bloomfield Estates Improvement Association Board. One of the primary responsibilities of the B E I A board is to protect and ensure adherence to our deed restrictions, which have been in effect since 1915. Those restrictions are mostly pretty simple and apply predominantly to setback requirements. Upholding these helps maintain the character of the neighborhood, which ultimately helps property values for the common good of all the residents. The dimensional variance requests before you this evening may have very little, if anything, to do with our deed restrictions. However, I do believe they are very much intertwined. Please allow me to explain. I believe you've received several emails and/or letters, messages sent to you, to the Z B A regarding this property from other neighbors expressing their concerns about site plans not being within our setback requirements. And also, please note, what is currently under review at 4710 Avondale Terrace is not stamped, nor has it been approved by the B E I A Architectural Review, which means it shouldn't have any approvals for building or anything. Their site plan proposes a home which clearly faces Canterbury Road, and it has a 40-foot setback from that lot line. Our deed restrictions require a 100-foot setback. Even if they were to use Avondale Terrace as the front lot line, which makes no sense, then they would be on a corner lot, and a corner lot requires a minimum of a 50-foot setback. And they're at 40 feet. We're pretty vigilant, not pretty, we are vigilant, about upholding our deed restrictions, and a home built with just a 40-foot setback doesn't meet those, that 100-foot requirement. On the application for the dimensional variances, item number one states, and I quote, "Strict compliance with the township zoning ordinance would alter the building plan and force the residents to be closer to the street." And remember, they're already at just 40 feet. So obviously, B E I A cannot approve that kind of setback. So regardless of how we look at this, the current footprint on the site plan doesn't conform to our deed restrictions, and it's going to have to be modified in some way for sure. Just for the sake of tonight's agenda, let's, for the moment, pretend that this house only needs to be moved back another 10 feet. And that's very uncertain. The variance requests on tonight's agenda are going to change in some way, and that's not likely to be more favorable for the wetlands or the natural feature setbacks. It's going to increase that encroachment. Perhaps unfortunately, this particular property at 4710 Avondale Terrace is a many decades ago victim of the railroad cutting through in the 1930s, making it difficult to build a house on this parcel. Therefore, we again respectfully ask that no decision be made with regard to this property until B E I A has had a, an opportunity for a complete thorough review and discussion with Mr. and Mrs. Renner. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else would like to speak on this item? Okay, so I'll close the public hearing and then let the applicant respond, some of the comments about the different things that were said.
I'm not going to go on for hours.
That's, that's good.
There, there are many misstatements in, in what you just heard. A lot of this, quite frankly, is because they do have a legitimate concern. Obviously, you saw real photographs of the drainage pattern of this neighborhood. But if we actually go into record with the Oakland County Road Commission, we will find that the major relief for this entire 200-acre area was blocked. And I have talked with the township and the county about how that all came about and how that all got resolved. It was blocked for several years. The flooding on that road was real. I built in this neighborhood for decades. I know. I had to go the other way many, many times, just like a lot of these residents. So to suggest that building this home is going to cause flooding like that is a fallacy. It's not based on science. And we were forced, as trying to build one home, to do a study of the 200-acre drainage map, okay, by H R C. The Renners have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to appease every single thing that the consultants have thrown at us. And we've done it. And we're still here. And we're not going away. Because what's being suggested to you tonight is that the Renners should mothball this property and forget about their dreams of building a home for their family. That's what's being suggested. I heard it in 22, 20, I mean, nothing new. I'm quite frankly emotional about it at this point, okay? I've been working on this every week for five years. So I, if you want to add anything, you're more than welcome. If you want us to table this for another month, just let us know. We'll table it for another month. It's been five years. I don't think anything's going to change. But there are facts that we put on the table that need to be addressed. You know, I, I'm very clear about, it says Canterbury Road up there, but if you go to the plat map, it says Canterbury Connector, and it's not platted. So there's a lot of, a lot of layers of difficulty in this case. But at the end of the day, in order for the Renner to be able to build their home, they need a couple of small variances to encroach into the natural feature setback, not the wetlands. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, and just, just to sort of refocus this, there's, there's a couple of dimensional variances here. So the, one is for a five-foot encroachment into the 25-foot natural feature setback, as you said, and the other is for the retaining wall that exceeds four feet in height, which is six, and you said you could have tiered it, and encroaching 10 feet into the required 25-foot natural feature setback. So we don't, there's not a variance here for the front yard setback, although there's a, there's a deed restriction that there, that the association feels very strongly about. And just so everyone understands, and the staff can support this, whenever, we have builders here, whenever you build a home, you're required to present a drainage plan so that none of the runoff goes onto any other property. So they've done that in this case, correct? That's, that's, that's a requirement, right? So there's already a drainage problem, and the fear is that this home will increase it. But our, you know, our engineering requirements are that when you do that, you must show that any runoff from a hard surface that's put on that lot will be collected and will not spill over onto another property.
That's correct.
So I'm just, just, just so everybody understands that as well, because we, we have had other situations where there's an existing drainage problem, and the assumption is, what's being put on it will add to it. So, so that's, that's an engineering requirement that, that's got to be met. Does anybody have any other questions for the applicant?
There is one more other variance, although it's not, you know, listed out here, which is the variance for the lawn and sod that they were looking to add to, which would encroach 25 feet into the required 25-foot setback for the natural feature. So that is also a variance as well.
Right. And in that case, what they're doing essentially is taking that buffer, and that's now becoming their, their yard.
Their yard.
So maybe, maybe that could be, we've had other instances like that. So I don't know how the board feels about, you know, this, this lot, you know, this attempt, and, you know, the encroachment into the natural feature setback. Anybody have any other opinions, thoughts, concerns?
This is a difficult one. It's a difficult one because, I mean, I completely understand how we want this lot to be buildable and for it, you know, to be built on. But it is a very unique lot that has a lot of issues that...
So this, I'm sorry. Go ahead. So this lawn, I don't see where it's spelled out, goes 25 feet into the natural feature setback. Correct?
That's correct. And I'm struggling with that, actually. I mean...
Yeah, could you make that smaller, that encroachment?
Absolutely. So right now, just to be clear though, the, the lawn that we're taking, we're doubling size on the northern side of the property in terms of giving it back to the natural features by adding that to the north side of the retaining wall and planting Michigan native species there. There's a mitigation plan that was submitted. It's been reviewed by the E E S D as well.
I'd like to ask the township a question.
Go right ahead.
Do, do we, does the township recognize that parcel as a wetland?
Portions of it, according to our, but anytime we have a property, so we have a 2007 wetland inventory, okay, which is what we refer to preliminarily, but in this instance, when we know there's a presence of a wetland, that's where we bring in Nizwander, who's our, who's our wetland scientist, specialist, and we rely on Nizwander to verify any wetland information that's being presented. So that's our checks and balances. So we do have our own consultant that would verify where the location of that wetland is. And I believe, in hearing the applicant, that that has been done. So we would recognize that as the professional assessment of what is on that property. Because since the, you know, the original, those overlays, obviously wetlands grow and change. So we don't take it for face value. We require there to be a delineation in the field to be made of that wetland, and then that delineation is then verified by our consultant. And that's what we take.
Thank you.
I know that there was a concern from one of the comments that we heard about the retaining wall. Can you talk a little bit more about the retaining wall, where it'll be located, and why it needs to be that height again? I know you mentioned that earlier in your...
Yeah, absolutely. So the retaining wall, I don't know how well you can see your map, but there, but there's a retaining wall that runs along the north side of the driveway. So the retaining wall, you know, basically runs along this path here, right? You see that there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, you know, basically at this midsection point is where it gets up to six feet. And in discussions with P E A, our, our engineers, we decided that it'd be better to have a six-foot retaining wall than to terrace it and push further into the, into the natural feature setback going to the northwest. So that's right on the edge of my finger there. Rather than terracing it, we're going to be up into the six-feet area right along here, and then it direct tapers down to zero here.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Go right ahead.
I have another question. In your professional opinion, as a builder, what would the footprint have to be? Right now, you said it's like 5,000 or 5,500 square feet?
Yeah, I believe it's 53-something.
5,300. In order to comply with, you know, both the deed restrictions and what the township is asking for, what would the footprint have to look like? Would it have to be 4,000 square feet, 3,500 square feet? In your professional opinion, what do you think?
So we've actually looked at that. And in order to recognize the Canterbury Connector as the road and have a 100-foot setback off the road, you would essentially be left with a very small little wedge at the back of the building envelope where you might be able to build something a little bit north of a two-car garage or 800 square feet. That's the deed restriction. The township restriction, we actually comply with, and...
You're talking about the township setback requirement?
Yes, thank you. Now, there's a little bit, there's another nuance here, okay? Because this is a common-used pathway and not a plattered road, according to the Road Commission for Oakland County, the right-of-way for this section, so stopping at Avondale Terrace and picking up again at Canterbury Road, the right-of-way for this section is 66 feet wide. So if those of you are familiar with right-of-ways, that's a pretty common number. However, if you look at the rest of this subdivision, Avondale Terrace and Canterbury Road have a right-of-way of 50 feet. The delta there is eight feet. So we actually are 48 feet back from the road right now, okay? So if you look at what the B E I A, the HOA approved with the previous owner of 50 feet, we're actually at a delta of two feet now. So we're actually only asking for two more feet than what they previously approved for house plans that were done by the Martala family prior to us. Now, if I, you know, just doing simple math here, if I want to abide by the 50 feet, I got to push the house two feet more back, and I got to ask you guys for two more feet into the natural feature setback. You can do that, too. There is a procedure whereby I can abandon the eight feet of right-of-way. It's a long process. We've already started it, but it makes no difference to anybody. It's the right-of-way. And like I said, it's 50 feet on the south side, it's 50 feet on the north side. I, I mean, we can get into all kinds of hoops and hurdles here, but, you know, you can imagine the questions we asked, you know, is, are they liable for the cars that drive up and down Canterbury Connector? It's on Lot 99. So, you know, there's a lot of questions here. But that's, we're talking a century ago, right? We're, we're in modern day. We're trying to build a family home. That's it.
Along the same lines of, you know, the maximum square footage you get, I don't see floor plans, but is this a four-car garage?
It's a four-car garage on the north side, yeah. Attached to the house.
So a smaller garage might keep those retaining walls out of the natural feature setback?
Yes, you're absolutely correct. Yep. So, but at the same token, if I go forward with the abandonment of that eight feet of, right, of that right-of-way, I can push the house and the detention basin eight feet closer to the road. I won't be abiding by the HOA restriction, but I would be abiding by the township restriction. I mean, this, this thing's a rock and a hard place, right? You all know that. They got things everywhere.
Would you be able to pass in that floor plan down here?
Sure.
It's not a full floor plan, but it might help.
Okay.
Yeah, it gives you, so, you know, on the question of the, the encroachment of the, you know, grass in the front, you can kind of see the mitigation that he's talking about and why, there's a trade-off there of going into the natural feature setback in exchange for the land of the north that you've now kind of given back or walled off. That's, that's your point.
Yeah, that's, and this is actually the calculations here. It's all submitted to the township, it's also submitted to the HOA. So, you know, the, the math here is that we have a permanent encroachment of 434 square feet. Our mitigation area is 1,530 feet.
Okay. Those are helpful numbers. Thank you. So everybody, is everybody kind of clear on, on the encroachment into the natural feature setback, right? Because that's what's being asked, the encroachment for the placement of the grass and then the retaining wall? Is that what we have to get a motion on?
Well, I can tell you, I'm struggling with the, the encroachment for the lawn and sod and all of that. I am really struggling with that, taking up the whole natural feature setback. I am struggling with that. I am struggling with that. I know that it's a modest-sized house. I completely agree with you for our township. But I'm, I'm very passionate about wetlands and natural features, so I don't know if you'd be willing to kind of reduce the footprint of the home a little, just to kind of help with that. I understand, I agree with you, it starts with the square footage, but that's kind of where my head is in thinking on it.
I mean, so what happens here is I'm beginning to dialogue, correct? How much less? If it's zero, I guess we gotta say it's zero, but then obviously, we're gonna pull back our mitigation effort then. So, you know, we're giving 1,500 square feet, and we're asking for 430 square feet, which is the size of a good-sized living room. So it's hard, it's hard for us to know where that line's at, you know? So, I mean, I'm pretty sure, I can speak for my client, that if it makes everybody feel more comfortable to stay five feet, right, off that line, we're probably gonna say yes. But I just don't know where that line's at. And we all know how these meetings go, you know? Like I said at the beginning of the meeting, if you feel like we're not ready and we need to table this, again, five years, one month, no big deal, right? But we've done a lot of work on this.
Do you think it would be beneficial to meet with the HOA that they were talking about not having that opportunity to see the architectural designs and things like that, or?
We'd be open to it. We haven't been asked to meet. We submitted this stuff five weeks ago now. They asked us to table at the November meeting, we tabled the November meeting. We were told we were gonna get a response by the 21st. We didn't get a response by the 21st, or even to this date. You guys got emails saying, table it again to January. Again, we're open to do that. I just don't know where this is gonna go.
I just want to note that as of right now, we have about 26 items trying to get on the January agenda, and we've already almost pulled for February. I'm just sharing that as just a fact of information.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Here's my point. We don't have in front of us a variance for the front yard setback, so that's not something we can vote on. It's just those three things. And I think, I'm okay with the mitigation they provided for the other ones, so I think there's, there's a, if you look at some of the other things, there's a small encroachment or a de minimis encroachment into the wetlands buffer area or the wetland setback, not the wetlands itself. So I know it's a tough lot. I'm okay with it, as explained. And the drainage, there's a drainage problem that has existed here before, and their requirements are, they can't, I mean, I don't know how to solve that. I mean, there's dirt road there, there's probably some of the grading things, but construction of this house, by our own requirements, can't add water outside the property lines. So we have to, you know, trust the engineers and the township and the approvals in that process. I mean, that's how I feel about it. And I don't, I mean, typically, I like people to meet, but I, you know, most of the comments were, you know, we feel very strongly about our deed restrictions. We're, that's not even in front of us. The front yard setback, how far the home is setback from the front, it's not an issue that we're deciding. We're just talking about encroachment into the natural feature setback and the retaining wall. That's all we have.
That's true. I was thinking of the comments that people had made about the wetlands as well, but I agree with you on that piece. I spoke where my thoughts were in terms of the, it was again the lawn area that was going to consume the buffer. That's where my main concern was. Because taking up that entire buffer is-
But you went through the whole mitigation-
We did, and I agree with you. And it was our hope to try to mitigate and have, I have four kids, so just having some sort of yard for them to play with because we have the retention base and taking up essentially the whole front yard, that was just our hope, and trying to be respectful of the wetlands, the natural features setback, by doing it to an area of 400 and some odd square feet, and then mitigating it in multiples elsewhere.
I understand your situation.
I have a question for our board real quickly. I don't see here where we're talking about the setback for the lawn. Where is that? Was that added?
No, it's in the description here, in terms of what they're seeking.
I see two-dimensional variance-
Yeah, it's not in our printed materials.
Yeah, I don't see it either.
It's here, but I don't know.
Is it noted?
If it's not in our printed materials-
Yeah, no, it's noted. Because the notice is-
That's why I missed it when I originally was going through the list.
Because, you know, if you-
You guys have such a good eye. It's in the notice under the 3P. It does note that it says, additional encroachment of 25 feet into the required NFS is proposed for grading lawn and sod work. So it wasn't, it was noticed. It's just not in your, the red part, that's kind of your cue. It's just not that part.
So that's the third leg of, that's the three-legged stool.
That's the one I'm having trouble with.
Right, because- Those are the three we're reviewing.
This third one is one that, based upon-
And so if you look at his plan, they have, they have, there was a mitigation plan given, and they've given back, you know, more to the buffer area than they have encroached into. By a factor of three?
Roughly.
Yeah. So they've given back three times as much land to the buffer area than have been, not taken, but encroached into. And the encroachment is grass. And it's other things. We've had other encroachments that are hard surfaces, this is not-
Well, my, I may be wrong, but my concern is if it's grass, you have to maintain the lawn, sometimes you can use chemicals, things run off into the wetlands, and that's what my concern is. That's why the buffer is there, to protect the wetland from any of those types of things. And so the fact that it is a lawn is concerning to me. That's what I was thinking.
I agree with that.
But-
So this drawing says the proposed sod lawn is 2,795 square feet. This most recent drawing that's showing, this is the sod.
Yeah.
And-
How much?
Well, I'm just going by the drawing. Proposed sod lawn, 2,795.
The Canterbury impact is 2,665 square feet, which would be restored.
Okay, so what's the depth of the lawn that we, we had one like this maybe a couple of months ago? You know, obviously with the sloping grades, you're gonna have doors and windows, you have to have egress off of the back. What's a reasonable amount to, you know, either pave or sod? And I agree, I think the 25 feet, you know, doing all of the 25 feet seems excessive. You know, it was 10 feet a reasonable amount.
So there, I mean, according to, I'm just reading my own plans here, but, you know, according to this, at all areas along the wetland, we're maintaining five feet of buffer. So we're not asking to go the entire 25 feet behind the residence itself. I don't have the exact mapping of the lawn in front of me right now. I know it was turned into the township.
So, but roughly 20-foot of lawn, and then the five-foot of buffer, then would be restored as part of your mitigation plan to natural features materials?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, obviously with construction going on-
The 25 feet is just for the installation phase.
Understand the temporary, yeah.
And so I guess the question, what the board is asking is, how much is a, is still gonna be encroaching after construction's over? Do you have that number?
Well, I'm just reading, the natural features permanent impacted area is a 434 square feet. The temporary impacted areas altogether are 5,560, and then the mitigation area is 1,530.
How far, what's the depth?
The depth here would be-
So we got the square footage?
30 feet. 30 feet. From the back of the house.
How far in?
So how far is that going to the setback? The natural feature setback?
20 feet. Bear in mind it's a pie shape, that's why it's hard to answer your question.
So there's five feet.
Of the natural feature setback that's, after your construction is done, that will remain on that side in addition?
Yes, at all areas.
Okay. So does that, does that answer your questions? So they, the 25-foot encroachment is during the construction phase?
Correct.
And then the lawn is only gonna go 20 feet into the 25-foot natural feature setback? Five feet of it?
Probably restored to natural-
So if, you want me to walk over the map?
Or you can point down there.
Oh. Sorry, thank you. If you follow, see this line here? That's your buffer line? Right? So that's why, when you talk about 30 feet, you know, you have to stay five feet inside of this line. There's 20, and then roughly 10 to the house, depending on where you're at. Obviously, the deepest point is here, if it tapers in, it tapers out pretty quickly.
And there's a deck off of that area as well? Is that where the deck?
The deck is this right handle right here.
Okay.
So any other concerns, or anything you want to ask the applicant about that area?
Seems like a lot.
A lot what?
To be encroaching into.
So do you have a proposal or something to suggest to the applicant that you'd be comfortable with?
I would like a less encroachment with the lawn into the natural feature setback. That's, or else I won't, as submitted, I don't see my support on this.
So instead of five feet, if we maintain 10 feet?
Let me think about it first.
How many is necessary?
I'm sorry?
How many feet into that setback is necessary?
How many feet into the, into the natural feature setback is necessary? I'd say that, I mean, quite frankly, it's not big enough to play soccer, not even close to do anything like that. It's just a small lawn area at this point. So I don't, that would be more of a question for the owner, I think, than a builder.
Well, we're now going 15 feet into the setback, based on coming out another five. I was just curious, you know, how would that make the functioning of your home? How would it impact that?
He's just looking for an area for a backyard, because he can't have it in the front. There's no area in the front.
Yeah, and I understand that. I feel for it. I understand that.
So it's not like it has to, you know, fit a car, it's not like it's fitting something into it, it's just a area to use, because you don't have an option in the front.
I think you need at least a 15-foot buffer before you hit the wetlands. I'm thinking.
Okay with that?
I mean, there's the board and the thoughts.
Yeah, I'm thinking it's in that range, yeah. Buffer has a purpose.
So-
So can someone-
None of our other variances are in excess of five or 10 feet, so it would only be that lawn area that would be limited also to 10 feet, is what I'm hearing.
Correct, right.
Yeah.
So can we have a motion?
All right, I will make a motion.
Thank you.
With respect to the developing the new home at 4710 Avondale Terrace, I move that the dimensional variance be approved based on the drawings submitted, information submitted and presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because of the extreme pressures of the natural features on the site, the curving front lot, and the other setbacks would be unduly burdensome to create a home of a reasonable size as presented. There's no injustice to adjoining neighbors by reason of the mitigation plans that have been submitted and the work that's been done through all the agencies, and the addition of the retention in the front. It is not self-created, it's due to the unique circumstances of the property. In regards to the dimensional variance for the retaining wall exceeding four feet in height and encroaching 10 feet into the required natural feature setback, again, I move that be approved. The plans that have been worked on and submitted are encroaching the minimal amount, a six-foot retaining wall at its very peak, is not out of keeping with this neighborhood and a number of other appeals that we see requiring higher retaining walls, and is therefore not injustice to the neighbors and is due to the unique circumstances of the property. The final variance on the lawn encroachment of the natural features, if it can also be a maximum of the 10 feet to provide the intended natural features restoration.
Support.
I have a motion and support, any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Request is modified, is granted.
So just to clarify, your motion means that they are allowed to encroach 10 feet into the required 25 feet? Thank you.
Correct.
Thank you.
Calling the next item, 1T4896 Lock Lamond.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Francis Keshad. I'm here on behalf of my clients located at 4896 Lock Lamond. I'm here to get approval for a sports court, which we had changed the layout and dimensions of that sports court to be like more harmonious with the layout of the property and in respect to adjacent properties and everything that's there.
Any questions from the board? I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this item? Close the public hearing and bring it back?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Sure.
So with regard to the permission request for the sports court, the appeal at 4896 Lock Lamond Drive, I move that the accessory structure be approved as requested or submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because the use of the accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood as this is a pretty common request. If this, hang on one second. If approved, the motion must include application for unnecessary permits to be made within one year. All permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen plantings will be required to completely screen the sports court and fence from public view. No illumination permitted on the sports court, and use of the sports court is limited to daytime hours.
Support.
So I have a motion and support, any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, request is granted.
Thank you very much.
Next item, number one, 7200 Old Mill. Is the applicant ready?
This is a presentation of a sports court. Once he gets to the slide, this was a sports court that was previously approved back in, it's on, I think, the next slide, because I added it. It was previously approved at a smaller size. I think it was 36 by 40 or something like that at the time, and now they've increased it about 10 square feet. That's the request to gain, they're seeking approval for the amended size compared to what was previously approved, and that is why it's back before you. So I would ask the board to maybe consider this item tonight, if you have enough information. And I can answer any questions, so here comes, she's coming back.
I just wanted to get the two numbers of what was approved.
Yeah.
What we have now.
Did you go to the? I added it to the slide. The, the previously approved square footage, it must, might have been on this PowerPoint.
Yeah, this is what I got.
Do you have what was previously approved?
Do I, what was previously approved was 36 by 36.
Thank you.
It was in front of you today, it was 36 by 50. Uh, we do have HOA approval. The letter was submitted to my office. I hope it was submitted to you.
And what's, what's the size of this lot?
I believe it's 1.4 acres.
Yeah, so it's a big lot.
I did submit photographs. I, I, I'll be blunt, I, I don't, you, you, many of you know that I come here quite often. I don't normally come asking for forgiveness. I came and got the variance. The variance is, is a permission, excuse me, a permission request, not a variance. Permission was granted. I let the homeowner and the landscape contractor, who are not of my employee, go do this. They decided in the field to go ahead and make it a little bit larger. I notified them at that time that they need to come back here. Unfortunately, the owner's traveling today. Landscaper doesn't show up at these types of meetings, so I'm your guy. It is a permission request, it's not a variance. Like I said, my office ran right away and got the HOA approval. I don't think there's any objection to this.
You know, you should take tomorrow off. So let me open this to public. Anyone like to speak on this? So close the public hearing. So I, I think we understand, you know, the difficult situation. You didn't have anything to do with it. Don't, we don't like it, but it seems like the lot's big enough. You know, I used to live on Old Mill. I'm familiar with that, that area. So I think it could support a little, a little more, but it's, it's unfortunate.
Well, if there's no more discussion, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
So with regard to the appeal at 7200 Old Mill Road for the accessory structure, the permission request required for the sports court, I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards because once again, the use of accessory structure is appropriate to the neighborhood as there are, it's consistent with what other homes have in the area. So if this motion is approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen plantings will be required to completely screen the sports court from public view. No illumination is permitted on the sports court and use of the sports court is limited to daytime hours.
Support.
Motion, support. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Can I get a point of clarification on the motion? Are you asking for additional evergreen plantings? Okay.
All right, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great evening.
You deserve it.
Yeah. Uh, item number two, 5566 Westwood Lane.
Good evening. My name is Norm Stewart and my address is 5566 Westwood Lane in the township. My wife, Susan Stewart, and I have been township residents since 1972. As our two boys were growing up, we needed additional space in our ranch home. And in 1988, we built an addition and patio off the back of our home. To screen, to screen the back of the house, the AC units, the electrical connection, the cable connections, what have you, we had a six-foot cedar screening installed at the back of our home. We also planted over a dozen Canadian hemlocks and other evergreen bushes as a visual buffer between us and the immediate neighbors to the north and to the west of our property. None of our immediate neighbors can see the existing cedar fences, screens. After 37 years, all the cedar posts supporting the cedar screens have become very weak and worn. And I, I think I also submitted a video showing how much movement there was on those posts. It's about a two-foot swing. All we request is to replace the same six-foot cedar screening in the same position as the originals, identical to what we built originally. The information packet on this dimensional variance request includes six letters of support from our newest, from our nearest neighbors and the president of the Westwood Manor Property Owners Association. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment? Close the public hearing. So they're just replacing the cedar fencing that's been there since 1987 when we didn't even have a ordinance to give them a variance.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
Unless someone else would like to?
We could put a historical plaque on them.
No, we don't want to do that. Then we won't be able to sell the house.
All right.
But maybe you could save one of the plaques and frame it and put it in your house. All right, go ahead.
With regard to the appeal at 5566 Westwood Drive.
It's Westwood Lane. That's a correction, please.
Make that correction, please. Westwood Lane. I move that the appeal, which is a dimensional variance required for the fence to exceed four feet in height, to be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to the fact that this is a replacement and not seen from any public view. There's no injustice to join neighbors because of that reason. Unique circumstances with the property have been demonstrated that this is just merely a replacement and as a result is not self-created. So if approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year. All permits must be obtained prior to installation. I'm not going to mention additional evergreen plantings because it looks as though you are well screened from public view. And the finished side of the fence must face the exterior.
Support.
Motion, support. Any discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, next item, item four, 1733 Morningside Way. Uh, night, uh, number three was postponed.
Oh, okay.
Is the applicant ready, 1733 Morningside Way?
Hi, Xander Bogart's architect for the, for the client. I'm sorry, I thought we were waiting for Andrew to come back. We are here before you tonight for variance at the front setback. We are requesting 25 feet into the front setback, leaving 15 feet along the front of the cul-de-sac. The image on the top left shows in the, in the gray area is the amount that we are requesting. The red triangular shaped area is, is what is allowed by the setbacks on the site, reduced by the wetlands and then the natural feature setback. So that red triangular area is what you can build in. We're asking for the gray area towards the front. So here are some existing images of the site. We have good-sized homes on either side of us and we just want to be able to build similar-sized home that is in keeping with everything else on the, on Morningside Way.
And condo associations approve?
Yes, we've, we've reached out to the association and I believe an email of approval was submitted last night.
Yep, great.
So we had an option or we, we, we struggled on how to best proceed if we wanted to ask for variance into the wetlands or if we wanted to push towards the front and ask for the variance. Otherwise, we, we can't build a decent sized home.
You guys had variance in the front or the back?
Front and the back.
You chose the front.
We chose the front. And, and this way we respect the natural feature setback.
Yeah, space tonight, that's good.
Yes, I think we made the right choice.
That's smart.
So, um, the, uh, we, we are showing the AC condensers on the top right. You can see we screened it. I wanted to see that, what the, what you guys think about that location. I, I know that it's preferred to be in the back, but because of the natural feature setback, wasn't sure how to best proceed with that. So we've shown it there. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have this time.
Any questions from the board?
Do you know, are the houses on either side at their 40-foot setback or are they closer?
They are at the, the required setback. And as you can see on the lower right, we're not taking full advantage of the full 25-foot variance. We're held back at the garage to try and playing out with the neighbor.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll open this to the public. Anyone in the public like to comment on this? Okay, we've got one.
Good evening. I'm actually the very first building next to it, 1745. I would like you to.
What is your name and address?
I'm Dr. Osama Gaber, 1745.
Thank you.
Which is the very first lot next to it. So I'm gonna start with what the gentleman just mentioned, that this will be accordance to the sizes of the house and the area. This land is 80% of it almost a wetland, if you can see that on the natural wetland structure. But the problem is, he's saying it will be within the sizes of the house and the, and the entire block. The smallest size of the house in the entire, in these seven houses are 5,500 square foot. He's proposing a 3,000. My house next door is 8,200 square foot. So this is completely out of what he mentioned about will be in the same size. Second issue here.
So are you saying it's too small?
It's too small for the houses in this, in this street.
I think that's the first time we've ever heard that.
It, too small for the, because that's what he mentioned.
Okay, no, I, I just want to make sure I heard you right.
Sure. But more important here is the, he's asking for a setback forward. So if you go into this street, you're gonna see all the houses 40, 40 feet back. And he wants to stick a small house next to a million dollar of houses with a 3,000 square foot, which completely gonna destroy the street, in my view. And it will devalue the entire housing structure and, and the.
Okay.
At least this street. That is my, my take in it. The third part from my side is if you put this house on the street, it will block actually my driveway because my driveway is at the end of the cul-de-sac and nobody will see my driveway. Okay?
Okay, thanks very much.
Sure.
Is there anyone else would like to speak on this?
Good, good evening. Yes, I'm Monsur. I live in 1721, east of where the property, the 1733. I, I'm here just to object because, you know, the, the look of this house, you know, our house is all the way to the back and this house is gonna toward the, you know, the street. So it's gonna, it's gonna look odd on the whole look of neighborhood. My concern also, like Dr. Osama said, like, you know, the house's size on that street, I, I doubt it, this house is gonna be like, you know, close to the size of this house. It's gonna look also make the whole street different from the rest of these houses looks like. The value of my house, I'm sure, is gonna be dropped because the, the house's value is gonna be different. This is also my, my concern, also my driveway right next to that house where it's gonna build, how the garage is going to be. I'm also part of the, part of the board of the association. The approval, we, we said it's, we have no objection to build. Like I'm, I'm, I'm one of, I object on the build. The rest of the board, they said, we, we didn't, we approved the setback, the front setback. We didn't, we don't, we have no idea how the architect, actual architect is going to be, look like. So we're, right now, I'm, I'm, was also discussing the, the garage looks like, the landscaping, the, the driveway how it looks like. So the, the board is saying, you know, we need to have the whole, you know, plan for that house how it looks like. If it's going to change the look of the neighborhood, we, we can object. So, so this, this is my, my concerns as the one next to this house. I don't want my house to get affected between the, the look, the, the value of my house and also affecting my, you know, my driveway, my access to my house. That's all, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Do we have the, the approval from the condo association? I, I didn't think it was sort of a, was there? You're sort of referencing some conditions that I, I don't think were in the approval that I remember reading. I just want to make sure my memory is correct. Is there anyone else that wants to speak on this?
May I add one point, please?
No, I'm sorry. Once you're, once you're, oh, you're done. So, so go ahead.
I also.
What is your name and address?
My name is Mohammed Mubin, M-U-B-E-N. And I live at 1718 Morningside Way. So I cross the street from this lot. So I am also concerned about the look of the street and the value of the house going to go down because of the, of this situation. So I also object to this proposal.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do have approval by the association. It's being passed down for review by the board members.
Anyone else would like to comment on this?
Yeah, my name's Alan Liederman and I'm part of the development team. And I don't know where 3,000 square feet came up, but we're trying to build as big as we possibly can on the lot. So we're hoping it's gonna be somewhere around 5,000 square feet. So I don't know how it's gonna be incompatible with the other homes around there, but our intention is to be compatible. And I think we were clear when we spoke to the homeless association that this will all be, the plans will be subject to their approval of the home.
Thank you for that. Does anyone else would like to speak? All right, so I'll close the public hearing. Yeah, and so the, so, so because this is sort of interesting. We don't, we don't have the full plans for the house. They came in to get the setback variance first, which is what the association approved. And, and, and so now you're gonna design something in accordance with that? You're gonna show it to the, is that the plan?
Yes, that's correct. We went exactly right. We wanted to see if we got the variance first before we expended more money and trying to see if we could do something. I, I just completed my home. I'd like to show it to, to give.
Everybody need more?
Okay.
You're, you're gonna have to go back and design it so you. Your work, so got it.
All right, thank you.
Is anybody ready for a motion? But thank you for offering that. So I hope, and I hope the applicants understand there, there's not a proposed size to the house. We've heard some comments, it's, it's, it's gonna be bigger. The only thing we're designing tonight is the variance from the front yard setback so that they can now design the house. So.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
If there aren't any more questions.
Sure.
In regards to the appeal at 1733 Morningside Way for the 25-foot encroachment into the 40-foot yard setback, I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all practical difficulties because compliance with the strict ordinance of the, letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because of the uniqueness of this particular lot that has actually quite a bit of wetlands and natural feature setbacks. There's no injustice to the joining neighbors because for one, they did get the approval from the HOA for this particular variance. And the unique circumstances of the property, again, because of the excessive wetlands and natural feature setbacks. And this actually applicant actually tried to accommodate that and protect those wetlands and actually take the frontage instead. And because of that, it is not self-created. With that said. Give me a second here. If approved, the motion also includes applications for all necessary permits. Uh, if approved, the motion also includes applications for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, request is granted. Calling item 57499 Duval Drive.
Hi, guys. Randy Hike with Action Fence, 4300 Delamere Court, Orla, Michigan. There's two variances here, one for the fence and one for the, uh, hot tub. I can speak on the fence. I don't really know what's going on with the hot tub. Steve does. The, there's a fence there existing, so when I got the notice that you were denying it and needed a variance, I was very confused. It, it, it's a four-foot tall aluminum fence. I think it's only on the front side that they're talking about, or it's, because it's a corner lot.
It's located in the front yard.
It's a, yeah, it's a double front yard, but I think we're more than, I wanna say, I think I had on the notes there, couple back. 14 Mile. No. I wanna say we're like 40 feet off the sidewalk, so it's not like we're asking to go a great deal in.
Yeah, we don't measure the, it's really with fences, if it's in the frontage, we count it. We don't, we don't say at 40 feet, then it's no longer in the front.
Sure, I got you. Sure. So, we're really asking for, looks like, uh, 12 feet, so 16 feet, um, into the front off of 14 Mile. There's an existing wood fence there now that's completely falling apart. I just looked at Google Images. You can still see the fence there, it was from before 2012. So, it's been there a long time.
And you're replacing it in the same location?
Same exact spot. And we're not even replacing the fence, it's a long 14 Mile. However, I imagine they're gonna wanna do so at some point. So, if you grant me this variance, you may as well grant a variance for that at some point. That way, it's feasible for them to do, and they don't have to come back to this again.
That probably wasn't noticed?
Well, that would have to be noticed.
I'm sorry, I missed the request.
No, he was-
He's asking for, um, this is a permission request for the fence in the front yard, and there sounds like there's a similar fence that we might as well tack, tack on this similar fence and give him the permission request to replace that too, but we can't do that, because that'd have to be noticed. Well, I guess it depends on what portion of the fence you're referring to, if you-
I'm just doing literally off the corner of the house, 16 feet. But there's a fence that runs parallel to 14 Mile at the end of that 16 feet.
Oh, on their property?
On their property.
Yeah, we're, we can't address that at this point, because it has not been-
No problem.
All right, now the hot tub. Hot tub man, you're up.
Permission request for the hot tub. Um, it's a seven-by-seven hot tub. It's gonna be, um, just off the corner of the house. There's already a Revita in front of it screening it, and it's screened, you know, on all four sides around. So, it's just, um, you know, it's located close to the, uh, the entrance door, and we couldn't put it on the other side. You know, they had the AC unit and things there. So, everything's screened, it just needs your, okay.
Any questions from the board? I'll open this to the public for comment.
I do have pictures of the screening, if you need it.
Uh, well, is that picture accurate?
It doesn't show all the screening around the whole yard, but I mean-
There's a photograph, that's good. The view to the south. What's 375 sign here?
Mm-hmm.
There you go, that, there's some, that shows some of the evergreens.
So, yeah, there's our provider, yeah, all four sides, all three sides.
And it would be, you think it would be screened with the-
Yes.
Current? Okay.
Uh, so, any other questions from the board or a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
Do we have a public hearing? I think you do.
I can do it again, open the public?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Close the public hearing. Double hearing.
Well, I'll start with the permission request first.
Sure.
In regards to the appeal at 7499 Duval Drive, uh, for the accessory structure of the hot tub, I move that the request be approved as submitted. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate compliance with Section 42-7.6 standards, um, because the use of such accessory structure is compatible with our neighborhood and our communities. Hot tubs are very common, and, um, there will be no injustice, because the hot tub will be screened. In terms of the dimensional variance at the same location, I also move that that variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulties, because compliance with strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, um, because basically, if they weren't able to replace the fence or have the hot tub where it is located, it would prevent reasonable use of the property. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, because the fence is actually being, um, replaced, as well as, uh, the hot tub will be screened. Unique circumstances of the property, because it has multiple frontages, it just makes it very unique, and because of that, it is not self-created. With that said, um, if approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. I'm going to say additional evergreens, if I can say this, may be required, just to make sure that there's no gaps in that screening to, um, screen the fence in the hot tub from public view. And plantings must meet or exceed the height of the hot tub at the time of installation for 12 months of the year. And the finished side of the fence must face the exterior.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? So, is that clear enough for the staff and enforcement? Okay.
Absolutely.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Congratulations, request is granted. Uh, calling item 6, 3986 West Orchard Hill Drive.
Hi, Randy Hines, 3986 West Orchard Hill Drive. We're requesting approval for some privacy panels that we installed back in 2024. They're highlighted in yellow on the left there. We, they are, uh, eight feet by five feet 11 inches, Home Depot. Uh, you can see the one there on the south side, screening our patio from the, uh, air conditioning. And then on the north side, you can see it's screening the, um, uh, generator from our neighbors.
How long have they been there?
Since last year.
And, and you don't have any screening? There's, there's no screening for them?
Screening, no.
Screening, so like an Arvita or something to screen it?
No.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this, the public? I'll close the public hearing. So, typically, for something like this, we would require screening. So, can you do that?
Sure.
Okay.
Oh, well, we can on the south side, it's on our patio.
Yeah, no, I, there's just, because I looked at this, I said this step, but I think, it looks like there's a little bit of, on the north side, you can, right?
Uh, exterior to the building, yeah, there's some low flings.
Okay. All right. So, with that clarification, anybody ready for a motion? Uh, I did, I'll do it again. I, I do it quick. It's like, it's like a magician, so. Open the public hearing? Close the public hearing? It's quick, I, it's quick.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
So, with regard to the dimensional variance, uh, the appeal at 3986 West Orchard Hill Drive for the, um, required for the fence panels to exceed four feet in height, and, I move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty, because compliance with a strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome due to that, uh, it's a tight space. There's no injustice to adjoining neighbors by the fact that he is going to, uh, screen the north side there, that would be visible from public view. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated by the fact that, uh, it is an existing, uh, exterior plan, and, um, it is not self-created based on the fact that it is in existence currently. So, if approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year and all-
Five business days.
Oh, I'm sorry, five business days. I apologize. And, um, additional evergreen plantings will be required to completely screen the fence panels from public view, and the plantings must meet and exceed the height of the fence panels at the time of installation for 12 months of the year. And, uh, the finished side of the panels must face the exterior. It appears that they are.
Support.
Motion and support, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is modified, is granted.
Thank you.
There you go. Item 7, 920 Southdown.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Gordy Muskele, 28400 Rually, St. Clair Shores. On behalf of the homeowner who is here at 920 Southdown, I work for Kimberly Fence, the contractor who, um, applied for this permit. Um, we're seeking a dimensional variance to add, um, four-foot tall fence, uh, in the front yard with a gate for additional security and privacy, well, for, uh, the homeowner. The backyard is already pooled with a, uh, retention pond behind it. His growing family would like an additional space for his kids in the front yard, not to be around the water. Um, he also owns, he's a practicing attorney and owns multiple golf courses in the area, which is why he moved down from Davison down this way for, uh, added security to get away from the golf courses. He's had some problems with some terminated employees, so would like additional security.
Uh, any questions from the board? I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment?
My name is Scott Lockwood. I live at 950 Southdown Road, a couple, uh, doors down from the subject residence. Um, and, I mean, I think that this request kinda flies in the face of the ordinance. If we had, there's no front yard fences, I don't think, anywhere in our neighborhood, almost anywhere in Bloomfield Township, um, from a security perspective. You know, I've raised four kids in Bloomfield Township, never had a fence. I'm an owner of a business, and, and now I appreciate the fact that, you know, there might be some other security concerns, but when it comes to security, what exactly, where do you stop, I guess? If you're looking for a fence around your front yard to provide security, seems like, you know, could you have razor wire if you were really concerned, um, or make it out of brick, or whatever? I just feel like if this neighborhood got proliferated with front yard fences, it would change the entire look and feel of the neighborhood. Quite frankly, it changed the look and feel of Bloomfield Township, so, um, I got, obviously, some significant issues, and I think I voiced the concerns of all my neighbors, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak on this item? Close the public hearing?
The, the street, Southdown, correct me if I'm wrong, there's two houses on it? I think there's, there's, the 909 faces, I think is a, is a Long Lake address. So, it's just 920 and 9... 32, thank you. My prescription's not that strong. The security feature issue is, in the society we live in today, maybe 20 years ago, nobody would have bothered, but, I mean, at what point nowadays, I'm, I sit on a school board in, in St. Clair Shores, and security is probably the utmost thing that we, we worry about in any respect, um, for anything nowadays, for the, especially when it comes to your children. We're just looking for additional space in the front yard for the kids to play. It's not a highly-traveled street, the, I don't think the, the fence, we, I do this quite often, I don't think the fence is gonna negatively impact the, the neighborhood itself. There is fence already around the back because of the retention pond in the pool, which were there before he, he moved in. The pillars that are in the front yard were, according to the previous owner, were put in for the purpose of adding the fence with the gate across the driveway. And I'm not sure why they didn't get to it, but they obviously moved and, and Mr. Share bought the house, um, this summer with the intentions of putting the fence up. It, it really, I mean, the razor wire, the, the other, the other comments, I, I just, you know, in this day and age, how much security do you need? You, you at least put the, put forth the effort and attempt. A four-foot tall fence is kind of a deterrent. I'm not asking for six-foot tall privacy. We're not asking for, um, pri, I mean, there's, if you go back one, the style of fence, at least it'll be a deterrent to stop people from coming into his yard. He does own multiple golf courses. He is a high-profile litigation attorney from Toronto. And, I mean, if you search the internet, you can find pretty much anybody and anything. You can find home addresses for a lot of people. We're just asking for a little added security. It's a, it's a very nice, uh, fence. It's pretty, very little intrusive, it's not, it's not, it's not ornate, it doesn't have finials on top. It's, it's, um, I know in, in the, in the township, we've had a problem in the past with finials on top of fences and, and animals. So, I mean-
So, one of the pictures, are you putting screening in front of the fence?
We will put screening in front of the fence. We weren't sure what was required, but we will put screening in front of the fence. Arbs, boxwoods, whatever, whatever the board would require, we're, we're willing to, to put screening in front of the fence.
Okay, how's everybody feel about it? So, if he puts it in the front and screens it?
You're also looking at putting a gate as well?
Yeah, if you back up.
Example?
That, one more, the other way, sorry. There's the, the, kind of an example of the gate. The gate would be operated, electronic gate. Yep.
I'm Rabby Chera, the owner of 920 Southdown Road. Good evening. Uh, I was also made, uh, notice that the previous owner had, uh, some teenagers come into the pool, um, unannounced, uh, random people. Pool crashing is what they mentioned, so, uh, that was a little bit of a concern when I, when I came from Canada to try to keep our family safe.
Thanks for that.
Now, let me ask you, you said that there's fencing in the back of the home, because you have a pool, right? So, is it completely enclosed with the fence?
Yes, there's no locking mechanism or anything like that, you could just push it a bit.
The current fence in the backyard, I don't, I, I would say would not be, by today's standards, pool code compliant. I don't know who put the fence in. I can't answer that question.
So, you might, somebody might be out to check that out now, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's something we can additionally switch if we, we get the variance for this, for sure.
But my, my question was, was the, the fence, because this isn't your home, this is just a sample-
Those are just sample pictures of the style of fence.
This is what it's gonna look like, with the screening.
With screening, with proper screening, yes.
However, and what I'm getting to is, is the back completely fenced, or is it just around the pool, the perimeter of the pool?
Well, the, the back is completely fenced, because there's a very large retention pond behind the yard as well.
I see. Well, I was just wondering if, you, when you were talking about safety for, or security for your children as well, that I was wondering if they did have an area that was completely enclosed? That was what my, what I was getting at.
To be completely enclosed in the backyard, you, you would still have access to the pool without additional fence around the pool.
Is the fence close to the lot lines, or is it close to the pool in the back?
It's, uh, it's around the lot lines in the back.
So, there is, there is backyard for the kids to play in in the back?
If you look at the overhead, it's very, um, it, it takes a, a lot of dips and twists because of the retention pond. It's not the most advantageous area for a-
How old are the kids?
Five and three months.
Five and three months, for a five-year-old to play in, there's a big, um, uh, it's not a grotto, because it, the water feature is, doesn't come out of it, but there's a huge, there's a rock bridge in the back there. They don't, they don't let the kids out in the backyard by themselves. If you go to the overhead of the, the backyard, it's, uh- And the, the whole yard slopes back towards that, um, retention pond.
So, I'm sorry, the public hearing's closed. I know a lot of people like to add something, but can't do it that way. So, any other questions on the board? Do we have a motion? I mean, how do people? Four-foot fence, screen?
How is a four-foot fence gonna prevent somebody from jumping the four-foot fence? Then we have to add up screening and-
I'm not looking to, I mean, that's why I didn't ask for six-foot tall fence. I didn't ask for- I didn't ask for six. I mean, four-foot would be a deterrent, somebody might think twice.
I'm not necessarily seeing the practical difficulty for a fence, and I know it's four feet, but in the front, I just don't see the practical difficulty. It's, it's my thought. I mean, he has the back completely fenced, so the children do have an enclosed area, and that's four feet, so it's just, the four feet is not going to make much more of a difference in the front, especially since there's going to be a gate too, so there's, I mean, you're not going to screen a gate. The gate will be very, will be visible. That's just my thought.
Yeah, I tend to agree with, I mean, one of the people spoke, our ordinance says not in the front yards, that, right, your playing area is in the rear, and the four feet isn't going to provide that kind of security.
The good news is this is Bloomfield Township, that's why we live here, because it's very safe. Our police department is amazing.
Well, and the flow of air and light, and...
Yeah.
I just think it sticks a long way out. The house is very well back, it sticks a long way out compared to any other house with no fence.
And it's not a major road, because I could see that too, with the young children sometimes in the front, if you want to keep them safe from getting out into a major road, I could see that, but...
He is right off of Long Lake, I mean, he's one...
I don't see the practical difficulty.
Mr. Chara, can we get a motion?
Sure. In regards to the appeal at nine twenty Sundown Road for the request for the fence, I move the variance to be denied as requested based on information presented. The applicant did not demonstrate all the standards for practical difficulty, because compliance with the strict ordinance would not be unduly burdensome because fences in the front yard are, are really not aesthetic, and I don't think they really give you enough security. They would be unjusticed to adjoining neighbors by reason of the fact that the, again, the aesthetics of the fence and the fact that there aren't many in the neighborhood, there are no unique circumstances with the property that have been given, and this, I believe, is self-created.
Support.
So the motion is support. So is your, so you mentioned the fence, does that also include the gate? Or are you going to make a separate motion? What about the gate?
Includes the gate as well.
I don't think the gate does anything without a fence.
We have, we have approved gates and stuff, so I'll just...
Put a gate without a fence?
Well, yeah, we've done that, so.
We, I mean, we would, we would take the gate to stop people from pulling into his driveway.
Yeah, and I'll just say we have done that.
But we, when we've done that, in my regulation, a lot of times it was because of the road that it was on, and usually it was attached to a fence as well, but...
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm opposed. So your request is denied.
For the entire fence and the gate?
I just want to note from the building division, hearing that there's a non-pool compliant fence out there is of a concern, so I would hope that you would maybe work with your client and encourage them to please get that, that pool fence as a safety hazard.
We'll have to look at the fence and see where we go and what we have to do.
Thank you.
Calling the next item?
I do have one, one question. That fence is so old that we can't match anything. Is that going to be an issue if we have to replace the gate? Nothing will match. That fence has probably been discontinued fifteen years, that style.
I would just defer for you to talk to our building department.
Okay.
In terms of what would be acceptable, but at the end of the day, there needs to be a pool compliant. The township requires that, actually.
Okay, I'll talk to Bob.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
So calling item eight? Eight? Six one seven two Indian Wood. Is the applicant ready? Get in here. Got tired out.
Mr. Chara, I can make a motion to move this to the end of the meeting and see if maybe it would show up.
Support. Motion support to move to the end of the meeting. All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
So we'll move item eight to the end. Mark it. Item nine, it's been tabled. Item ten, two seven two five Turtle Shores.
Hi, my name is Gurusamipalanichami. This is our home. I'm seeking the approval to install a generator for this variance, in order to meet the safety guidelines of genrac, genrac generators. So the details are here. Side and back of the home is surrounded by venting to inside of the home, as well as windows that make it unsafe for a generator to install very close to the home, so that's
I just have a question. Is the generator ten feet off your property line?
Yes, approximately, yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that there was, this is solely for the location, not immediately adjacent to the house?
Okay.
Because when we looked at this earlier, I think that you demonstrate that you have at least ten feet from your lot line to the generator.
Ten feet from the, from the right side of the house, yes, on the east side.
So the generator's at least ten feet back from the lot line?
Ten feet from the, from the home, actually.
It's ten feet from the home?
No.
Yeah, so the variance is because it's not immediately adjacent to the home.
So we're not sure exactly how far off the property line it is.
Okay. It's not immediately adjacent to the home, it is...
And it's in a side yard, right?
I would say that was the rear yard.
Okay.
If you're saying this is forty-five feet...
Okay, so the frontage is where exactly? On Turtle Shores, okay, so that's the, that's the frontage. So it can't, the, the generator, where it's being placed can't be seen by your neighbors or from the front?
There's trees out there on the, there are trees are covered.
Okay.
Yep. Between, between our home and the neighbor's house, there's a tree on there.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Well, even with the trees, our ordinance requires that you screen it tight to the unit, to the height of the unit with evergreens. Is there space to get that all the way around?
Any other questions? I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment? Close the public hearing, bring it back for a motion?
I'll make a motion in regards to the dimensional variance for the generator at two seven two five Turtle Shores Drive. I move that the dimensional variance be approved based on the information provided, that the generator need not be directly adjacent to the house, but is acceptable in the location proposed, so long as the, the unit is screened for the full height at the time of installation with evergreen screening twenty-four months of the year, and strict compliance with the letter of the ordinance, we'd be unduly burdensome due to the locations of the windows in the house, and we see this with generators, we need to be distanced from the house. Should this motion be approved, application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and obtained prior to installation, as well as the full evergreen screening.
Support.
I have motion support, any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you.
Item eleven, one eight two two Fox River.
This may be the last time. This may be it.
So we had a pavilion that we previously approved.
Yes.
You want to enclose it with a lifeguard, to make it a lifeguard station, so there's some, some panels on it, and it's a permission request because of the addition of the panels, even though we've approved that structure, the panels are a bit different, so that's why, that's why you're here.
Right, and we have some temporary panels up right now.
Yep.
I mean, it's what we would put there, but we have them just screwed in, just to keep them up temporarily, only because of, if they weren't there, people could walk through to the pool area. So we had to put something up temporarily, and we figured, let's just make what it would be there and just put it up temporarily. If you guys didn't approve it, we would have to just pull it down. So, yeah, we want to make it into a really nice guard shack. One-third of it would be storage, and two-thirds of it would be area for our guards to be able to greet the residents and also help them. So if you go to, that's facing the parking lot, and that one on the bottom right, there'll be an opening that would go right in there, that would be kind of almost like a food truck opening, that would open up with a counter, and people would walk up to there to check in. And then the gate to enter is directly to the right of that structure right there.
Thanks very much. Any questions? Open this to the public. Close the public hearing.
Mr. Chara, make a motion.
Sure.
So with regard to the permission request, the appeal at Fox Hills Community Association, which is eighteen twenty-two Fox River Drive, for the required to enclose the pavilion previously approved by our CBA board, I move that this be approved as submitted based on information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with section forty-two dash seven point six standards, because the use of the accessory structure is appropriate, since this is a pool area and a checking area is, is clearly, you know, makes sense, is logical. So if approved, the motion must include application for all necessary permits to be made within one year for the enclosed pavilion, all permits to be attained prior to installation.
Support.
Motion support, any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
I think that's it.
Is it? Are you sure?
Is it, is it easy to hire lifeguards now?
No, because all the pools, they get competitive, and so every year, they up their rates to try to steal lifeguards from everybody else. We actually have it a little bit easier because we're the only neighborhood.
Yeah.
And so a lot of the kids in our neighborhood want to lifeguard at our pool, because it's close, but a lot of the other ones struggle.
Yeah, I did that at a camp one summer, I got my senior life-saving and water safety instructor designation, so.
WSI, nice. Very nice.
You can go, you can go upstairs.
No, no, that's long expired.
Yeah, it sounds like you want to relive the glory.
I tell you, being a lifeguard at a, at a camp is hard because you can't see the water.
That's the toughest.
Stressful, very stressful.
It is very stressful, especially when you hear, you blow, you do the numbers, you have nobody, then you have to hold hands and get in on the water.
Everybody's got to do that.
Scary. So thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Maybe we'll see you in the summer at our pools.
Great job.
Calling item twelve.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Matthew Stein, I live at seven four one one Old Mill Road. I'm here on behalf of Bloom Pediatrics, the new tenant at this location, four three two oh five Woodward, requesting two variances related to our proposed building sign, a variance for an increase in size beyond what the ordinance currently allows, and a variance for an illustration element, a B logo, which exceeds the percentage of graphic area permitted. I'd like to explain why these variances meet the standard of practical difficulty, why they are appropriate for the property, and why granting them serves both the business and the public without creating any negative impacts. The Bloom Pediatrics building sits over one hundred feet from Woodward Avenue, the main arterial corridor from which the majority of visitors approach the site. The significant setback creates a visibility challenge that is unique compared to neighboring properties. The ordinance's standard size, sign size simply does not provide adequate legibility at that distance, especially for medical offices, where clear identification is essential for parents arriving with children. The increased size we are requesting is not for branding excess, it is to ensure safe, functional visibility at a distance that this specific property imposes. This hardship is tied directly to the characteristics of the site, not personal preference. The previous tenant in this same space displayed a sign that exceeded the current size limitations and is larger than our sign. Approving our variance would not introduce a new visual condition to the area, in fact, it maintains the visual scale and expectations that drivers on Woodward have already been accustomed to at this property. This demonstrates two things, a sign of this size is not out of character for this location, the impact of a larger sign has already proven to be acceptable within the community context. Bloom Pediatrics' sign includes a small B illustration, a key part of their identity that helps families immediately recognize the practice. While the illustration exceeds the percentage cap outlined in the ordinance, it serves a clear, public-facing function. It helps parents and children identify the medical office quickly and accurately, it provides an approachable, child-friendly visual cue that communicates the nature of the business. It enhances readability and recognition from a distance which is especially important given the property setback. The intent of the illustration rule is to prevent oversized graphics and overpower the streetscape. We feel that is not the case here. The B is appropriately scaled, professionally designed, and integrated responsibly into the sign. Approving this variance creates meaningful benefits without any downside to the city, improved wayfinding and safety for families seeking medical care, clear tenant identification for a business providing essential community services, continuation of the existing visual character established by the previous tenant's sign, and no adverse effect on neighboring properties, traffic, or the aesthetic of the corridor. Our request aligns with the spirit of the ordinance, ensuring attractive functional signage while addressing a legitimate practical difficulty that the ordinance's standard dimension simply cannot. In conclusion, Bloom Pediatrics is simply seeking a sign that is proportionate to this site, appropriate for its distance from Woodward, and consistent with what previously existed here. The variance requested allow the business to serve the community effectively while maintaining the character of the district. We respectfully ask for your approval of both variances. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Any questions on the board? I'll open this to the public. Anyone like to comment? Close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
There's no questions. Very well done.
Yes.
So, in regards to the appeal at forty-three two zero five Woodward Avenue, for the dimensional variance for a wall sign that exceeds the thirty-eight square feet, I move that the variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty, because compliance with the strict order of the, letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome, because it would prevent reasonable use of the property. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, for fact that a larger sign would actually make it very safe for people to identify the location, especially since it's on a busy road like Woodward, and when you're talking about pediatrics, I think that's very important. Unique circumstances of the property have been demonstrated, again, because of where the property is located, also that there was a previous sign of the similar size, and so people are used to that on Woodward as well, and because of that, it is not self-created. So with that said, if approved, applications for all necessary permits must be made within one year, I misread, must be made for one year for the sign, and all permits must be obtained prior to installation.
Support.
Motion support, any discussion? All's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
Item thirteen, eleven ninety-one West Square Lake.
Good evening, Patrick Funky with Dual Landscape Architecture. I'm here on behalf of the petitioners, TMP Architecture. We are working on a proposed exterior enhancements for their south building at their Bloomfield Township campus. We have developed a master plan to include an inviting outdoor experience to be utilized by the firm's employees and their occasional guests, to promote out, more outdoor space for their employees. We are proposing a sustainable, large, permeable, outdoor ornamental paving terrace with workpods and furniture picnic tables and, and high-top tables for outdoor eating during the lunch hour and beyond, as well as workstations for their employees to utilize during the workday. We are proposing a, a small paragola that would be twelve foot by sixteen feet, approximately ten feet high, it'll be aluminum structure. There are examples that we submitted. We are also proposing a small outdoor kitchen, a fire, a gas fire feature for evening events, a water feature that is self-contained, to create some noise and distract from the very busy thoroughfare of Telegraph Road, and a security fence around the perimeter. We do have many vagrants and trespassers that come onto the property at the Square Lake and Telegraph intersection. And lastly, to, if you were to flip to the site plan, we have, yep?
Sorry.
You're fine. You're fine. We're trying to create a, a safe environment for their employees and their guests. We have some meandering paths of decomposed granite. All of this fencing would be 100% screened by evergreen material, and we have a retaining wall, a natural boulder retaining wall, at the bottom of the sheet to create a level area for the walking paths with evergreen plantings are providing on top. So, we believe this plan is a good example of sustainable design, focus on promoting enjoyable outdoor experience for their employees. This was also supported fully by the Bloomfield Township Design Review Board meeting earlier this fall. Thank you for your consideration.
Any questions? Open this to the public. Anyone like to comment on this? Close the public hearing, bring it back. It's a very nice idea.
I'll make, I'll make a motion.
Sure.
You know, it's getting late. All right, so I will start with the permission request first. In regards to the appeal at 1191 West Square Lake Road, for the accessory structure of the fence pergola, gas pit, and water feature, I move that the request be approved as submitted based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate compliance with section 42-7.6 standards because of the use, the use of the accessory structures is appropriate for this particular location, and they've made quite a bit of effort to make sure that this would be harmonious, as well as not promote any injustice to the neighborhood. In terms of the dimensional variance for the same location, I also move that the variance be approved as requested. Based on the information presented, the applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome. Basically, because without being able to have this variance, they will not be able to provide these particular features for their employees, and there's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors because it will be screened, the wall, the fences will be screened. I think actually the way that they have laid out the plans will actually add some really nice aesthetic value to the area. Unique circumstances of the property, again, because it's on a very busy road like Telegraph, I think that they have made a lot of concessions for that, and because of that, it is not self-created. With that said, if approved, the motion also include applications for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction.
Support.
I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much.
Looks nice.
Item 14, 1050 East Square Lake Road.
Look at you.
Last but not least.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Steve McCallum. I'm here on behalf of the Detroit Meeting Rooms for the property at 1050 East Square Lake Road in Bloomfield Township. I'm here to seek an additional variance for a six-foot fence in addition to the already approved six-foot fence on the property. The majority of the fence that we are installing, as shown with the green line there, was an existing six-foot fence that's decrepit at this point. The front portion with the little blue showing the entrance gate as well is the only part of the frontage that would be getting an additional fence on top of what's already been approved. The yellow line drawn on the property, I know it's not the best illustration, but that is the existing variance we had approved already for a six-foot fence that is installed. And then the back line, the, the blue along the back of the property, would be a new installation of fence to protect from the retention pond. The reason for this request is for both security of the church property while in use and while not in use, as well as protection from the retention pond to make sure any children that are on site for the church do not, you know, get back into the, the wetlands area there. The, I think that's probably a high level over you. I guess I'm happy to answer any questions you guys would have about the fence property.
Actually, I think that was a very good illustration. I like the color coding. It makes it easy to see.
Yeah. There is a couple of photos, I think, I submitted as well, just to give, that is the existing fence type, and I think there's also a couple of photos of the, what it looks like now, and the frontage will be screened as well of the fence. The reason the existing approved fence is not screened yet is it's part of the final landscape plan. We did think the whole property would be finished by this point in time, but it obviously hasn't gone as quickly as we would have thought. So, that should be screened spring of next year as well.
Thanks very much. Any other questions? I'll open this to the public. Close the public hearing. Bring it for a motion.
I do want to share, share with the board that I'm a neighbor, and they did a fantastic job with the fence. With the frontage on Square Lake Road, it looks so much better than what they replaced, so it really, you know, brought the, the whole site up several different notches and stuff like that. And, yeah, I mean, and I'm, I would, if I was attending there, I would be concerned about the kids getting out. I mean, that is a hazard there, the wetlands and stuff like that. I mean, it's a beautiful area, but you just don't want kids getting close to it, so I can understand that, and they've made a tremendous investment there, so I also understand their security concerns. It's just about making sure that they're protecting their property.
Thank you.
I just want to verify too, that fence along the rear is not within the natural feature setback?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
It's motion time.
I'll make a motion. In regards to the appeal at 1050 East Square Lake Road, for the accessory structure, I'm sorry, non-accestrary structure, for the fence exceeding four feet in height located in the front yard, I move that the variance be approved as requested based on the information presented. The applicant did demonstrate all standards for practical difficulty because compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because without being able to have a fence of that height will prevent the reasonable insecurity use of the property. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors, but wanted, the fence will be screened, and I think that the adjoining neighbors would also like that area to be well protected, particularly since there will be children involved. Unique circumstances of the property begin also because of, it is on a very busy road, and there's also wetlands that also require some security and protection, and because of that, it is not self-created. With that said, if approved, the motion also includes application for all necessary permits must be made within one year, and all permits must be obtained prior to construction. Additional evergreen plantings should be required to completely screen the fence from public view, and plantings must meet or exceed the height of the fence at the time of installation for 12 months of the year.
Support. I have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, your request is granted.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
So, we have item eight.
Mm-hmm.
So, it's just a generator. The only thing about this is I think it needs screening. Right? So, it's a generator located not immediately adjacent to the house, which is like the other guy, it'd have to be screened, I think.
Another picture.
Another picture.
Well, I guess it's kind of, well, you can see it on the side there. So, I don't know if we can do it and just tell him he's got to screen it, or...
I would think that the board, you have information denoting the request because it's not asking for dimensional variance for a setback. It's due to just the, the variance request is from the distance to the house, and if the board feels that it can be adequately screened, then I guess I would ask the board to consider what they would feel comfortable doing with that.
I didn't go with it. Just tell him to screen it. You're saying January's packed full.
Yeah.
I'm going to be ill in January. I'm not going to be.
He's making a point of it.
So, can I make a motion?
Sure.
In regards to the appeal at 6172 Indian Wood Trail, I move that the permission request be granted for...
Dimensional variance.
What's that?
Variance.
Oh, the dimensional variance be granted for the location of the generator not immediately adjacent to the house. Compliance with the strict letter of the ordinance would be unduly burdensome because the location of the generator functionally works best off of that corner. There's no injustice to the adjoining neighbors by reason of the actual distance away from all the property lines, and it is not self-created, the need for generators in our current climate. Should the motion be approved, all permits, all necessary permits must be applied for within one year, and additionally, the unit should be screened to the height of its, its height at the time of installation with evergreens for 12 months of the year.
Support.
Motion support. Any discussion? Wait a minute, did I open this to the public?
You didn't.
All right, so I'll open this to the public before we vote.
Hello, hello?
Close the public hearing, okay. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The request is granted. So, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a second?
Four.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
The motion is passed, and that's our last meeting of the year.
Happy holidays, everybody.